I'd like to bring this meeting back to order. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening, everyone. We do have a fairly brief meeting this evening, at least it seems that way. We have no presentations or appointments this evening. I have three sets of minutes that need approval.
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier?
I move, excuse me, since I find it. I move that we approve the minutes of the special meeting of October 23rd, 2018, the regular meeting of October 29th, 2018, and a regular meeting of November 19th, 2018.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the special meeting minutes of October 23rd, 2018, the regular meeting minutes of October 29th, 2018, and the regular meeting of November 19th, 2018. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We will now move into our consent agenda. Item A has been removed for this evening's meeting, so we will move to item B, which is the 2017-2018 year-end action for the fund balance allocations. This is an annual technical exercise necessary to formally close the books for the previous fiscal year and produce a comprehensive annual financial report in accordance with generally accepted municipal accounting principles and applicable requirements and pronouncements from authorities such as the Government Accounting Standard Board. Conformance to this discipline is an essential element of the city's commitment to best practices in financial reporting, sound financial management and planning, and transparency in communicating financial information. For this item, there is no fiscal impact from an expenditure perspective. This is not a request to expend resources. It is strictly recommended plan for allocation of those fund balance to close the books and allow for the financial report to be completed in a timely and proper manner. Agenda item C, Proposal for Hazardous Material Assessment and Technical Design Services for Abatement at Northland Mall. Prior to demolishing the former Northland Mall, there remains a need to provide hazardous materials assessment and design services related to inspection and removal of additional environmental material. The company HRC responsible for the demolition documents has selected SME to assist them with the effort. Based on the attachment from SME, the scope of service and associated fees will be divided as follows. Task 1, Documentation Review of Hazardous Material Assessment. Task 2, Hazardous Materials Abatement Technical Design Special化 specifications and bidding services. Task 3, Hazardous Material Abatement Project Monitoring Services. And Task 4, Hazardous Materials Abatement Project Administration and Report. SME combined total fee for Task 1, 2, and 4 will be $137,000. SME has been informed, no change orders will be presented to council for future approval. Funds are provided in the General Fund Support Services account incorporated in the first quarter budget adjustment.
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier?
I move that we approve consent agenda items B and C and ask for a roll call vote.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve consent agenda items B and C, and a roll call vote has been asked.
Brightwell?
Support.
Fracassi?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted.
Thank you. Again, this evening, we have no public hearings or site plans to be reviewed, so we'll go right into communications. Our first request for recognition is Pamela Gerald. Will you please come forward? You have three minutes.
I want to just get right to the point. I was here on the 26th, and I basically read the same speech. On January 7th, 2018, negative news reports began surfacing about Southfield Sapphire Apartments. The reports stated that Sapphire was without heat and water, which forced the now homeless residents to flee to local hotels for shelter. Both of the boilers at Sapphire Apartments had failed, causing numerous water pipes to burst. In addition, without heat, the apartments were unlivable for the winter months. Slowly, things began to improve, and eventually, the residents moved back into their apartments. Then on May 30th, again, negative news reports began appearing about Sapphire Apartments. This time, it was the air conditioner. And then the basement flooded. Now, I said at the last meeting that I thought that the council, the then-council president who was Dan Brightwell, owed the residents of Sapphire Apartments an apology. And the reason why you owe them an apology is because while the building department had Sapphire Apartments under investigation based on your September 8th trip to go and check it out, you were able to, in some kind of way, get a donation. Now, I didn't say that your donation was a crime, because you made it sound as if I alluded to the fact that it was a crime. What I said was, it was not appropriate while they were under investigation. So I wanted you to see, if you forgot, Kristy Ernst is the president of the company that runs Sapphire Apartments. She gave you $500. It's purported that Sean Stafford is the owner. Sean Stafford also gave you $500. Now, I'll ask you.
Ms. Gerald, can you address the entire council?
So I'll ask through the chair to former president Dan Brightwell, what was the date of this campaign finance report? If it was any time after September the 8th, you owe those residents an apology, and since you were not going to be bought, and you said all these things that you would not do when I helped you get elected, you said you wouldn't do this. So make my day, and make the residents' day, and give back this $1,000. But I already know you're not going to do that. What do you always say, "Corporate America," or something like that? Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Brightwell.
Ms. Gerald, as usual, you traffic in misinformation. I've made arrangements with the Oakland County Election Division, simply because there seemed to be an issue with you to return those funds to the donor that is in the process. And for the benefit of the residents of Sapphire, and also of all the residents of the city of Southfield, as chairperson of the Southfield City Council, I initiated the ordinance that ensure that all buildings in the city of Southfield, residential apartment buildings, will be inspected. I turned over to the building department a template. We researched various entities around the city, and we got a template for the building inspection of all apartments. So I initiated that. And also, it can be verified with anyone who participated in that process of developing that ordinance. I provided a methodology for scientific sampling. So you are trafficking in misinformation, and as of right now, that building, based on our building department and the reports that we are getting back, it is coming to, we cannot afford to have a vacant building in the city of Southfield.
We were there for the last inspection. That's not true. We were there, the Southfield citizens.
Again, Mr. Brightwell has the floor.
For the benefit of individuals who are listening to this particular audience, no illegal, anything illegal happened. But I am making arrangements to return those funds, for the sake of argument, because I know this will be an issue between now and December 31, 2019. So this will come off a certain individual's table of things to talk about. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Our next request for recognition is Gerard Mullin.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Mr. Chairman, Southfield is known as a successful, diversified city. One reason for this success is its low, low crime rate, the third lowest of all of Detroit's contiguous suburbs, all thanks to two former black police chiefs, who for the last 27 years has brought the crime rate down and down and down, a testimony to their administrative skills. Another example of smart folk here, here in this city, is the fire chief, Chief Johnny Menefee, whose tenure began on July 11th, 2016, and within two years, he brought Southfield's fire rating number down to a 2, thus lowering our homeowners' insurance premiums. Only four other fire departments here, here in the state of Michigan, out of 1,887 rated departments, have as good of a fire rating number as Southfield. Sad to say, today, out of the top 12 administrative jobs listed in the city calendar, only one position is currently filled by a black person, the aforementioned fire chief, Chief Johnny Menefee. Tell me, Mr. Chairman, what is wrong with this picture? Over 90% of the top 12 administrative jobs are currently filled by white folks in a city made up of over 80% black folk. This city's administrative complexion should reflect this city. In 1968, it did, but today, it doesn't, not even close. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Ms. Sonia Simpson-Gardner.
Okay. Let me get started. City council members, president, mayor, I am coming to you guys again, Sonia Simpson-Gardner. I live at Old Stream. I don't want to keep giving out my address. Coming before you again, like I said, I will continue to come before you. It has now been 22 days, and nothing has been done. No one has addressed me. No one has called me. No one has attempted to help me. But I thought I would bring a picture of my daughter to help you see this beautiful young woman that is at Rose, that is doing her part, that has a 3.9 grade average, that goes to school every single day, that has not missed a day, even though we don't have running water where we can take a shower, because I have experienced so much negativity from an alleged corrupt police department that no one has attempted to help me with over this last couple of years. I've been blocked from getting in contact with city council members, from the media, and no one has attempted to help me. Mayor Seivers, or Severs, I'm sorry if I mispronounced Seiver, I do apologize, but I am asking for help. I am a single black woman. I've been blocked from everything, including employment. I am struggling to help this young lady, and I will do my part to continue to help her. But I'm letting you guys know that someone is actively trying to destroy my life to cover up a story that I've tried to get out to you guys, and I will continue to come and see you guys as many times as I possibly have to, but I'm asking for help. No one has attempted to help me. No one has called me. I am a single black mother trying to help her daughter. And I'm hearing all kinds of stories about, "The story's made up, I'm crazy." You can say what you want to say, but I need help. And again, I will continue to come and help. And like I said before, good trumps evil any day, and I serve a powerful God, and I have a lot of prayer warriors that are behind me that are attempting to help me. And if I have to come to every city council meeting and provide information and documentation to you guys, then I will. I'm asking for a meeting. I'm asking for peace, and I'm asking for help, and no one is helping me. But I'm doing my part to try to help my daughter, and I will do anything that I can to help this young lady, even if it kills me.
Our next recognition for, or request for recognition is Mr. Keith Harris.
How you doing today? I'm here on the behalf of all RAC and Life Matter in our community, and my P.O. box is 2679, ZIP code 48037. First thing I want to say to the people of Southfield, there's a very good program on 9/10, every Saturday from 6 to 8, and that's Judge Nance's program to help the community understand law. Best program I've ever heard, really. She had a very good show, speaking about jobs and how to conduct yourself in court. It's one of the best programs, I think, on 9/10. The other thing I want to talk about is Dan Brightwell. You don't have a problem. Tanya Morrison, you don't have a problem. And when people suggest that I, that you guys have problems, I take offense to that, because our biggest problem is these 501(c)(3)'s ran by the mayor, Mandelbaum, and the city administrator. That's a problem. Taking our homes and setting us up for failure is a problem. I truly believe we got some honest people sitting on this council. I'm looking at three of them right here. Bringing this prosecutor back was a dishonest act, and I truly believe that Mandelbaum shouldn't even had a vote due to conflict, his conflict of interest being involved in these 501(c)(3)'s. I highly disrespect that. We are in a lot of trouble. I just went to court with one of my neighbors who has cancer, and the way they treated him, the code enforcement department and people in the legal department, give him two months to get his act together, or they're going to bring charges against him, you know, for not connecting. Again, this is the craziest thing I've ever heard of. This must come from, come to an end. I talked to my mortgage company, and they say, "Wait a minute. Should our underwriters now start checking for civil infractions, code, doing code enforcement, checking before we approve loans?" I mean, come on. And the funny thing about it, the properties that come up foreclosed on winds up in the hands of their organizations. I again oppose taking the distractions off of the mayor, Mandelbaum, and the city administrator, and putting it on Dan Brightwell, even somebody trying to bring up Tanya Morrison. I oppose that. We got more important things and bigger people to handle here. You know, there's some crooked things going on in this city, but I don't believe it's you, Dan, and I don't believe anything, you know, that's going on with Tanya Morrison. I think we got some bigger issues, some bigger fish to fry. And I highly respect, like I said, three of you, and I got a lot of faith in the three honest people that I know that's not going to let the people down. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Debbie Holcomb.
Chief Senator.
Debbie Holcomb?
No.
All right. Our next request is from Brenda Smith. Brenda Smith? Our next request is Mr. Harold Hill.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm loud, so all I can hear it. Hello, my name is Harold Hill, Cruz, council people. I'm here before you today to kind of add on to a story I asked about earlier about Beechwood's golf course. I was recommended by our city administrator to talk to Terry Fields, the director of the department, to find out if there was an idea or a thought of them closing Beechwood, which is one of our jewels of the city of Southfield. And she said there's, let's say, it's not paying for itself, basically, let's keep it simple. It's not paying for itself, and to keep the jewel open, they have some issues. So I just wanted to let the people of Southfield know that it's on the table. However, I think we could save one of those jewels, and she did make a suggestion, because I said it is age-friendly, and that's not just for the seniors, and I've also mentioned that you have to bring in the youth. She made a suggestion to bring in the youth at a certain wage to kind of come and golf, the high school students, to get more people involved, and that's one way to save it. So I'm going to make this appeal to our citizens of Southfield, and I am in marketing, so I will be happy to help in that area, because I think our youth do need more things to do. So I just wanted to let the people of Southfield know that that is on the table, and we can't let this close, but they can do something about it. Thank you.
And our next request for recognition is Gregory Keeler.
I have a question. What good is a poorly thought-through ordinance? 1571 is that? We have had two town hall meetings about it. We've had 21 years that it's supposed to be in place. We have had bonds passed for it. We have had several meetings on it, and we still have not come to any conclusion on it. This thing was written so badly that it couldn't have been thought through at all. We have had other ones that have been written, but it's usually taken two or three months to get, to get it resolved. This one, we can't get it resolved. I look at also the things that neighbor into it. So we passed the inspection ordinance, landlords so they would not neglect neighborhoods through the NRI. But the NRI, I didn't see fix or help with any of the 15 or 17 homes that were missing on Circle Drive. Why? Why does the dorm that was asked for not to be on Circle Drive by the residents of Circle Drive have a sewer line? But Circle Drive does not have a sewer line. Why does every property around Circle Drive have a sewer line? But we don't. We just fixed a place over there, but we had to fix the septic tank. But if you walk to the end of the driveway of that house, you look directly at the dorm that has a sewer line. This is a problem. This should be addressed, this should be fixed. It shouldn't be passed over in 21 years, it shouldn't take that long to fix it. It seems like things that we do for Lawrence Tech, you get those things passed by quickly and fastly. Things for residents and everything else, it seems to be a problem. If the residents vote you in, why can't we be first? Thank you.
All right. We're now moving to the council portion of our meeting. I have two travel expense reports that need approval.
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier?
I move that we approve the travel expense report for Ms. Tanya Morris to the National League of Cities Conference in Los Angeles, California.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the travel expense report for Tanya Morris's attendance at the National League of Cities. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the travel expense report for Mr. Lloyd Cruz to the National League of Cities Conference in Los Angeles, California.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve the travel expense report for Lloyd Cruz's attendance at the National League of Cities. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not too will abstain from that vote. Counsel, any comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Frazier, I mean, Fracassi, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an announcement. I was given this document when we were in study session. It's free winter hats, gloves, and socks, sponsored by the Southfield Human Services and Bullies Tree Service. It's Friday, December 21st, 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock, at Southfield Parks and Recreation Room 115. Southfield Human Services and Bullies Tree Service are making sure everyone stays warm this winter with the Third Annual Free Winter Hats, Gloves, and Socks Giveaway. Residents of Oakland, Wayne, Macomb Counties can stop by the Southfield Parks and Recreation Building on December 21st, between 1:00 and 3:00, to receive a winter hat, a pair of winter gloves, a pair of socks, and those items will be available on first come, first served. So anyone who has a needy child or knows a needy child, December 21st, 1:00 to 3:00, Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mandelbaum.
I have two questions for the city administrator. The first one is in regards to our ice arena. I've received several complaints the last few weeks that the general skate on the weekends is in the evenings, which makes it difficult for those with families or young children to attend, because starting at either 5:00 or 5:30, gets into dinnertime and bedtime routines, especially for younger children. And I was wondering if there's any way that, I know that it gets rented out for tournaments and for Lawrence Tech and everything else, I didn't know if there was anything that we can do to make it more available for the rest of the season, and I'm not expecting an answer now. So that was, that was the one, the first question. And the other question I had is, I know that recently, the city closed on RFQs or RFPs for the Evercenter property across the street, and I was wondering if you could share a status update on that project?
The city is currently purchasing, is evaluating the proposals that have come in. The city, the city's purchasing department, which facilitated the RFPs, is evaluating those proposals. I'm not exactly sure where they're at, but I know they've received them, and the department purchasing is evaluating them.
Do we know, is there a timeframe attached to that?
I don't have that timeframe. Again, I could ask our purchasing department the timeframe.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Frazier?
Oh, I'm sorry. Again, this is, this is to the city administrator. Could we get a update on the GFL problem? For the past several days, I've been driving around the city and looking, and those, and I've seen especially couches and big items that should have been picked up on the trash pickup day that are still sitting at the curb. So somebody's not picking those, those things up. Also, I don't know when they came out, but I saw bags of leaves out. Um, also, I'm, I don't know when they came out, but I saw, uh, bags of leaves out. And I know that, uh, I reported that my neighbor across the street, they didn't pick their, his leaves up for a number of days. So I'd like to get a, an update on what's going on with them and...
I, I will speak to Public Works and get an update on that. We've been, I know for a fact that we've been dealing with leaf pickup and behind, they're, they are running behind on that. And they're, they're getting back out there. That has been the leaf pickup, the last two weeks has been a huge issue throughout the city and we continue to work with getting those leaves picked up. And part of it's the volume. Um, but typically they're supposed to be picked up on the day that, uh, their, your garbage, your normal garbage pickup is. I know in certain cases, they have been running one, two days. But I am bewildered by is how they can go through an entire neighborhood and miss. The sporadic miss is where my level of frustration, I, I'm losing a lot of patience with them. And you can pick up the entire, uh, block, but you miss one or two, it, it defies logic.
You know, uh, I know one of their, their reasons is that it's, you know, the volume is such, but, uh, you know, GFL has been in Michigan for more than one year. They know it in the fall, leaves fall down, people rake them out, put them out at the curb. So they need to start planning ahead of time so that
Certainly.
they gear up for picking up the leaves and, and, and stuff.
Certainly.
Or maybe they need to go to the, uh, other, uh, waste haulers and find out how they do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Morris?
Yes, um, my question is to, uh, the city administrator. Uh, the resident, Mrs. Simpson Gardner, has come before us a few times now and, uh, I'm sorry, I was saying my question is to the city administrator. The resident, Sonia Simpson Gardner, has come to us a few times now and her, uh, requests have been, um, uh, multiple. Um, my question to you is in reference to, um, the support services that she's identified. Is it possible that, uh, Rhonda Terry, maybe we could link her with Rhonda Terry to see if some kind of supportive services could be provided for her to help her meet, uh, some of the needs that she's expressed?
I can, I can ask our human services department to meet, uh, with her, sure.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Brightwell?
Yeah. Uh, in, in the past, I would infrequently mention something about veterans events, uh, happening, uh, around the metro area. And I haven't done that in a couple of weeks, uh, simply because my good friend, Mr. Tim Workers, passed. And Tim was the supplier of that, uh, information from the, practically the whole state as a project that he undertook when we were on the Veterans Commission. And it was an extensive list of activities. So now I am, um, researching how best to gather those things that are happening and the, those items that are happening in the metro area for veterans and also in the city of Southfield for veterans. So, uh, I promise you next week, if we have veterans out there who are interested in activities, I will have, um, a report on, uh, extracurricular activities for, for veterans. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fercas.
Anybody else who's going to speak? Uh, two things, and backing up on what, uh, Councilman Frazier stated, a lady stopped the sweeper and said, "How come you're not cleaning the leaves that are at the curb?" And the guy said he can't do that with his sweeper. And so I traveled around through the city and now that we have ice and, and tried to get some of these, um, leaves up to see what the heck the problem is, the leaves are frozen to the ground already. And there are a lot of, a lot of leaves at the curbs and plugging up the sewers. And, uh, if we get a rain, we're gonna have a little problem in some of the neighborhoods. And I don't know how to approach it, but, you know, this has been a very unique winter in that, that there's a lot of leaves and there's a lot of elderly who couldn't get their, their leaves up. I'm sure Mr. Cyver, Mayor Cyver knows what he's run into with the rake program, that there's a lot of people that need the help and there aren't enough people to help them. And, uh, I don't know what the answer is, Fred, but, um, we're gonna have, uh, a lot of problems because what these people are doing now is they're raking everything onto the street. And there's piles of, of leaves everywhere and on the street and the sweeper won't pick them up. So I don't know what, uh, we can do about it, but, uh, maybe someone can come up with an idea to get another week at least to pick up and, uh, see if we can maybe stall the inevitable. But, uh, it is a real problem, especially with the aged people who have not, normally they're out there raking, but the cold weather and they're not about to go out, 19-degree weather. And I know I told them that, you know, this was the last week and a couple of the neighbors and I helped out some of the neighbors, but gosh, we got in ourselves, there's 125 homes, probably, I don't know, probably 20 haven't got their leaves up yet. So I don't know what the answer is, Fred, but it's really a serious situation.
We will pursue, uh, uh, obtaining another week. We will pursue obtaining another week.
At least in getting something on cable that can give some information to these people that, you know, this is the last call and whatever it is that we can urge them to maybe sell out, say what happens, you know, if you're a neighbor to a person can't get the leaves out, maybe you put a team together and go help them. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, I hate to bring it up, but, you know, I was talking about the ice box ordinance. And, uh, I went out today and, and, um, it got a total of 18 signatures opposing that ordinance. And I asked these individuals, a lot of them are county, and, and, uh, didn't understand what I was even talking about. And I said, "No, that box is gonna have to go inside or you're gonna have to get rid of it." And they said, "Why?" You know, and that's their big problem. And they take you into the gas station, between the shelves that are inside and the coolers, there's no place to put ice. Now, you know, you can go to, to say, and say in emergency, you know, you can go to the big chains and get ice, but you know, even if they have a thousand bags, that's not gonna suffice. And so they are going to go to the little stores where they have the ice boxes and get help. Secondly, in the summertime, the people who are getting gas, the workers are stopping there and filling their jugs with ice in their boxes. And I just think that, that these are the stories I heard today from, I think it was eight of them, uh, that they just need their boxes, they need to have that service. And, and, uh, I know that, uh, our city planner, you know, raises it and we got 38, but, you know, we got already 18 signatures out of 38 that want to be left alone and say, hey, we have to make a living. And, uh, and I would just hope that somebody would table this until we could maybe have a meeting, but, uh, they, people were gonna bring 30 people here and they seen it was the last item around that they could talk. And I said, "You can't talk because you didn't fill out a form." But there's over 30 guys that are gonna come here that own gas stations in the city that want to be allowed to have the boxes. And I know that, that, you know, it, it may be excitable, but, uh, you know, their customers don't care and they're really not a nuisance to the city as much as they claim it is. So I would just like to ask that, uh, we sit down with these business people and, and see what we could do to alleviate the, the problem.
Anyone else, counsel? All right, Mayor Cyver?
Good evening once again. Uh, Southfield, uh, has a very active chapter of My Brother's Keeper. And, uh, there, uh, the chapter is launching, uh, a new program, uh, uh, starting, uh, this Saturday, uh, December 15th. Uh, it's called Meal with a Message. And, uh, there'll be a monthly, uh, get-together in the, uh, Markot Room, uh, in the lower level of City Hall. On Saturdays from 11:00 a.m., uh, to 1:00 p.m., uh, a lunch will be provided. Um, the program is open to teen boys of color, grades, uh, 6 through 12. And every month there'll be a different topic. Um, this month, the topic is dealing with loss. And the loss could be a relative, um, any kind of loss, including, uh, loss of a pet. Um, and, um, there'll be people there to, uh, discuss and counsel, uh, on the various topics. However, um, it's not a drop-in program, pre-registration is required. Uh, so the number is 248-796-4503. Again, that's 248-796-4503. And it's Saturday, um, this month, December 15th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., uh, in the Markot Room on the lower level of, uh, City Hall. That's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Zorn? Anything for us?
Uh, yes, as discussed earlier in the study session under closed portion regarding, uh, three of our collective bargaining groups, I'm requesting, uh, resolution to ratify the proposed contract with ASME 329. Also ratify the contract with ASME, uh, 3636, our supervisors group, as well as ratify, uh, the con, the proposed contract with, uh, T-PoM, uh, collective bargaining group.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contracts as discussed earlier.
Support.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that, um, we ratified the ASME 329 contract, 3636, as well as T-PoM. Are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
I have no other items. I have, uh, already engaged GFL to, for a week extension. We'll deal with those BAC items. We'll also, uh, try to get some more open skate times and we'll make the referral over to human services. I think that's the appropriate place.
Thank you. All right, um, Madam Attorney?
Uh, through the chair, thank you. Um, as discussed in the, um, study session as well as in the closed session, um, next week I will be moving, um, for, um, a resolution for support on, uh, the two pending lawsuits, uh, listed in the closed session item agenda.
Very good. Okay, so we'll be looking for those on next agenda. Excuse me. All right, Madam Plurk?
Uh, just real briefly, uh, you all should have got, uh, election results in your packet last week, it was a PowerPoint. Uh, just wanted to formally, um, thank the voters here in Southfield. We had over 38,000 voters that voted in November, which, uh, put us percentage-wise as the highest percentage, uh, community in Oakland County. Um, so definitely, um, happy about that. And we came in second of actual voters, uh, to Farmington Hills by a few voters, but overall, just to have that type of number at 63% overall turnout in a gubernatorial general election, that has never happened in our 60-year history. So I just want to thank all the voters and, um, that voted and the highest, uh, we had five of the highest communities. So, uh, the area, St. John's Armenian Church was, uh, both of their precincts were the highest voting precincts along with Levy, uh, School in our community. So definitely very excited and, uh, continue to move forward with the momentum in getting, uh, the carryover so that these same individuals who took the time to vote in this gubernatorial election will take that same consideration to vote in our local election that's gonna be November 5th of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't see, I don't believe the treasurer's here with us. Anything else in planning? Good there. Assessor, engineer, very good. We don't have any meetings that we need to schedule at this point, just have one ordinance to enact.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Frazier.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1699.
Support.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we enact ordinance numbers 1699. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
It's, uh, PSLU 18000. What is it? You were at the meeting.
It was the tax amendments that we did last...
Oh, the tax amendments.
The tax amendments from last week. All those changes in the zoning ordinances.
Right.
Icebox, you signed that, right?
Yeah.
Was it on the record?
What's that on the record? You say you want what on the record?
Do you know any way with iceboxes?
Yes, okay. Yes, it is part of one of the changes. All right, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. Ordinance is enacted. Is anything else for the good of the order?
Adjournment. Adjournment.
All right, meeting adjourned.